Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Trustees Village Port Jefferson, November 20th Agenda Meeting. It is currently 6:03 PM. Clerk Perillo, would you like to confirm the presence of a quorum?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Shepro?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Giuliano?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Hill?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Ugrinsky?
Present.
Thank you. I'd like to also note that Attorney Moran and Treasurer Gaffgar present as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Perillo, do we have any announcements tonight?
Yes, Mayor. First announcement is that the next upcoming Village Board of Trustees meeting will be the December Work Session Meeting, which will begin at 5:00 PM on December 4th. The second is an announcement from the Governor's Office, which states, to put it simply, "The general public is being asked to refrain from burning things in public, given the increased fire risk that the current weather conditions have caused." Quote, "This burn ban prohibits the starting of outdoor fires statewide for purposes of brush and debris disposal, as well as uncontained campfires and open fires used for cooking." That's from an official press release from the Governor's Office. Quote, "Backyard fire pits and contained campfires less than three feet in height and four feet in length, width or diameter are allowed, as are small contained cooking fires. Please keep in mind that New York State residents are prohibited from burning garbage or leaves all year round, so that's certainly out of the question at this moment as well." At the end of last week, the Hudson Valley and Long Island were at, quote, "very high", unquote, "risk for fire dance."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In light of that, we have been reminded about that here in Port Jefferson as well, and I want to give a very strong shout-out to our Port Jefferson Fire Department and the other fire departments in our surrounding communities. We had a very, very significant structure fire this morning at a house on High Street, which was devastated. There were no injuries to the family; they lost some animals. But our fire department and the mutual aid responders came and took care of that fire and prevented further damage to the surrounding area after embers had been released from that fire and off into the woods and to the other community to the north of the property. Other responders, the mutual aid responders, were assigned to take care of that while our responders and others took care of the structure fire. So there was another brush fire in the community last week. There were three major fires in our community over the last week or so. And so we cannot express a strong enough appreciation to our firefighters and first responders for helping take care of this community without major, major damage in this time of very serious drought. So gratitude all around. Now, we'd like to welcome the Suffolk County Police Department up to give a public safety and welfare update. Thank you for being here. Yes.
So I'm filling in for Casey Berry tonight. She's out. I'm just here to give a brief synopsis, an overview of village statistics year-over-year. So we're looking at October the 23rd through November the 20th, last year versus this year. And a brief overview, stats have pretty much stayed the same year-over-year. No assaults, that's good. No burglaries. One additional criminal mischief this year over last year. We saw an increase in harassments, the source of which looks like a couple stemmed from, three of which stemmed from St. Charles Hospital, all three cleared by arrest. Two other cleared, and one is still ongoing, active. We saw one larceny as opposed to the same last year, actually, one. No menacing, no robberies. Total criminal incidents this year, 22, as opposed to 17 of last year. Slight increase in aided cases, 92 over 82 last year. No aided overdoses that were fatal, increase in alarms, and an increase in noncriminal incidents, 311 over 253 of last year. And in all those, five arrests were made. Just a brief overview of the crimes over the last month, nothing crazy notable, nothing jumping off the pages as violent. A couple larcenies involving automotive vehicles, one of which it appears is still active, the other one was closed. Uh-huh. Thank you. Just another reminder, our community meeting is December 10th. For those of you that haven't been to the 6th Precinct Community Meeting, it's held at the 6th Precinct. It's going to be at 10:00 AM. It's held by our inspector. He does a great job of a more macro review of the whole precinct rather than just the village. He's very well in tune to all the happenings in the precinct, so if you haven't been, it's good to attend. That's all from me. Anyone have any questions for me?
I'll just make a comment real quick, just to say thank you to Suffolk County Police for working with the village to host a Coffee with the Cop early in November at the Village Center. It was very successful, well-attended, and it really helped bring the community closer, I think, to the police department in the 6th Precinct.
Yeah. I was there, it was a well-attended event, and glad to see a lot of you guys there.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for your input, Sergeant, and the statistics.
One moment, Bruce, please. Stephen, would you be able to, Bruce, one moment, please. Would you be able to speak into the microphone that Stephen's about to give you?
Again, thank you. So I think a lot of people are here because they want to maybe get the answer to a fundamental question, which is, are we safe? And you are the most qualified person in the room to answer that question. Maybe you can tell us if you think we're safe here in Port Jefferson.
Yeah, I think absolutely. Suffolk County, historically, year-over-year, is one of the most safe counties in the state. We pride ourselves on good police work. We raise our families here. You know, I'm a North Shore resident. I'm not in the village of Port Jeff, but, you know, we're protecting our community and our family, and we have a lot of talented people to do that. I was a city police officer before I was a cop here, and I tell you, Suffolk really has some of the finest officers that money can buy, and they are very talented and very motivated. Ninety percent of us live in the county, and a lot of us are very, very local to the precinct. We're protecting our own families, so it matters, you know, just as much to us as it does to the community. So yes, absolutely, I would say you're safe, and it's home to me. It'll always be home, and we care, so we're going to keep putting the effort forward.
Kathleen Riley, 17 Leeward Lane. I live up in the Highland Condos. I've been there 23 years, and I don't know if you're aware of Upper Port, but I definitely don't feel safe there. And just in the last month and a half, there have been, what I called the police, it was four times. And now the Suffolk County Police, they were fantastic when they did come and they did speak with me, Officer Palmer, there was one after the other. They were fantastic. And also Code coming and also following up on things. I spoke at the last village meeting, but Code, NOR the Code, was here. And I named three things that had happened in the last month and a half. One, where a gentleman exposed himself, he was standing on towards the end of the Long Island Railroad where the staircase goes up and over. He was standing along the wall, and as I was driving over the speed bump, he exposed himself. I called the police. I hope that was, you know, I didn't stay around to make sure, you know, that was taken care of. Then I was going to be going early to the train station in the morning, and I wanted to make sure it was safe. I went over when it was just starting to get dark, I'm sorry, when it's just starting to get light, and there's a bunch of men underneath the, again, going up the stairs and down the stairs at the end of the railroad that are there just smoking. They look a little disheveled. I did not feel safe. There was ones also laying across part of the parkland. Okay, I called the Suffolk County Police. They came, they met me in the parking lot of the medical building, and they said, oh, well, that's under the jurisdiction of the Long Island Railroad Police. They had to wait for the Long Island Railroad Police. So they came, they went and spoke with them. It ended up that they're from Pox Christie, they're pushed out at 7:00 in the morning, they can't smoke in Pox Christie.
Right.
Okay, this is a problem for us that really should be taken care of by Pox Christie. We now have the problem, even though they're supposed to be taken care of, you know, residents that come in there.
Sure.
Okay. Then there was an encampment in the parkland, a woman and a man, and that was also something that went on for like three days. I want to first thank DPW Steve Gallagher and also then Code Chief Officer Owen, sorry, who came on the day off, and they went and took everything out of there. I mean, it was a whole tent, framework, you name it. And then I also want to thank the Mayor for her responsiveness in getting on this, that it got taken care of. Now, the situation is I'm asking for more police presence in Upper Port. It definitely is not a place that's safe. I know you just talked about the safety.
Sure.
I don't feel safe.
Okay.
And I know a lot of people, I don't even walk. I do walking in Port Jefferson. I don't walk from there. I go, I drive downtown, then I walk. It's not safe.
Yeah.
And we really need to have more police presence for the parkland, for the Pox Christie, the residents that go there, the homeless, and then the homeless that don't get accepted in there.
Yeah.
They're laying around too. And the officers have told me that, yes, it's a problem, but we cannot, we cannot tell them to go anyplace. They're smoking, they're walking around, and I said, even if they're smoking pot, yes, because it's legal, no problem. Sure enough, this Saturday, I called the police again. This is the fifth time, because now there was a disheveled man. I feel for them, trust me. I definitely feel for them. But I'm a tax-paying resident, and I don't feel safe. Pox Christie is not paying taxes. I know, I know there are good things that are being provided. I'm not against that. It's just that we are now the ones that are victims of what's going on, and it's not right.
Right.
And if you look at the big picture, I mean, we were going to make that parkland into a park, it would have been a park for the residents of Pox Christie, smoking and, I wouldn't feel safe in that park. And if you look at the big picture of the revitalization of Upper Port, I want to thank Gito, who has built two beautiful complexes, thank God for him, and, but, you know, we have to look at the big picture there. If that place is going to continue to be made into something beautiful and safe, Pox Christie is a problem. And police presence.
So a few different things at play there. Railroads have always been a little bit difficult for police work. We get a lot of transient people that are coming and going, and they're transient. They're very tough to predict and, you know, to track. We are tracking the homeless issue and the issues that stem from that. We have to, you know, DSS within our precinct. They're placed in many different locations through the precinct, and, you know, it's unfortunate that the less fortunate people often suffer from drug addiction and other issues that turn into community issues. We're tracking that. We have an ongoing patrol check at the railroad. I have a new member on my team that was assigned to the village on patrol. You have my word that I'll have him check into those things and, you know, whatever we could do to help. But we are tracking that, and you have my word, we'll put in the effort to try to quell that. It's tough. It is very, very tough with railroads. Like I said, they're transient, and, you know, they kind of wiggle between the lines in what they can do, legal, not legal. I hear you. You know, I have the same community concerns, and we'll do our best.
I've been watching around the railroad. The railroad, there hasn't been presence right around the actual building. The presence has to do with Pox Christie and the homeless.
Sure.
And again, I'm not safe, and I know a lot of other people are not safe either. Walking, you should be able to walk to the train and take the train. You should be able to walk downtown, walk into Upper Port. It's not possible.
Hi, I'm Lisa Yeager. I don't need that, I have a good mouth.
You do, you do, so the public can hear you on the livestream.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Yeager, resident here in Port Jefferson Village. I'm also a retired New York City police officer. I actually have a question for you, actually, maybe it might be an opinion question, but how do you feel about the village taking the guns away from the qualified police officers who are village constables here? Do you think it's going to help us here, or do you think it's going to hurt us here?
Yeah, I don't necessarily have an opinion on that. I mean, you know, I'm not too familiar with the inner workings.
Officer, may I, I just want to make sure the question's clear. The village does not have any constables in its employ. So I don't know if you want to rephrase the question. The village has only civil service titles as code enforcement officer assigned to it.
Okay, but am I correct that some of those code enforcement officers are retired police officers and do carry weapons?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm just.
Constable, and the correct answer to your question is yes, because constables are peace officers under the state of New York.
Correct, I understand that.
So when you say, can constables safely carry, that answer is yes, because they're peace officers. So it's not a fair question to pose to this officer, because the correct question is, can code enforcement officers carry the firearm? And that might, maybe he can answer that or not, but at least it's the right question.
Okay, do you think that the code enforcement officers that are qualified to carry weapons should carry weapons in the village? And will that, or will that not, make your job easier?
There's certainly two different angles to that. I mean, there's a liability concern, and then there's a community safety concern. I'm somewhere in the middle. I don't necessarily know the inner workings to really give you, you know, a formal comment.
Right, but, well, okay, so the next question I'm going to ask you is, as a police officer, if I took your weapon away, would you feel less qualified to get involved in something dangerous in our village?
Certainly. I mean, like I mentioned before, I'm a fan of good police work, and you show me an over-policed neighborhood, that's probably somewhere I want to live.
Okay.
So, you know, the more cops, the better. I don't know the inner workings.
Thank you, you answered my question. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Tracy Donnelly, 2 Stern Drive. How often do you work in conjunction with our code officers?
I'm sure it varies over the time period, but pretty frequently.
Pretty frequently?
Sure.
And do you find it helpful and supportive?
We have in the past, sure.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have a motion to go into executive session.
Can I say something on behalf of all the residents here in Port Jefferson Village? This is the third meeting I've been to.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Of course you can.
I'm so sorry. I hate to be a troublemaker, but tonight's going to be the night. This is the third meeting I've been to where we've had to sit here for a couple of hours, and I have animals at home I have to take care of. I've missed getting up talking the past three meetings. There's a lot of people that have things to say here tonight, and it looks like your agenda is really thick, and it looks like you're not going to be out for a while. Can you just hear what a couple of us have to say, you know, as village residents?
We just have some business to attend to, that updates from legal counsel that our board needs to hear.
But your board can hear it, but your village needs to speak with you, the people that elected you.
Absolutely, we want to hear from the village.
Okay, but.
Absolutely. But our agenda goes into executive session now.
Okay, and when will it be out of executive session?
Well, trying to keep it as short as possible, so it has a lot to do with, you know, the folks sitting around me.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
We'll try and make it short. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Discussion?
Well, one, if I'm remembering correctly, generally, we do do public comment before we move on with, I think we have our updates from Suffolk PD, and then when Code was doing their updates, we had built to them, and then there was public comment. So if I'm remembering correctly, I think this is the first one that I've, since I've been a trustee, we're putting the public comments later in the meeting, and I do think we should be respectful to all the folks that came out here tonight to have us.
So the public would like to go into public comment now, so we go, the only thing with going into public comment now, and there was usually a reason why things shift a little bit, for, you know, it's not just arbitrary, like we don't want to hear public comment before we go into executive session, because we just don't want to hear public comment. Love hearing public comment. That's one of my favorite parts of the meeting, right? But we have legal counsel here that we've asked to update us on some matters related to contract negotiations, and felt it was important to hear that, and then.
But he can hear it an hour from now, can he not?
It's, we can't, we, of course we can, but it might impact some of the things that we think when we hear public comment. Do you know what I mean?
Well, that's what we're hoping.
Like, there's information.
That's what I'm hearing.
There's information that our legal counsel would like to provide to us, so we are better prepared when hearing public comment. And that's an important component of this.
How about 9:12? 20 minutes to 15 minutes.
Like I said.
Mayor, we have other, multiple issues to discuss in executive session. If we break for executive session to address this very specific topic with Labor Counsel who's downstairs waiting, I can't see that taking more than 10, 15 minutes.
Okay.
And then if we need to go back in executive session after, we could certainly go back in.
That sounds good. So do we have a vote?
Wait a minute, hold on. Can we stick to the 10 minutes? Because in deference to everyone that's in this audience, I've always felt that they should be speaking before we go into exec.
I would love for the public to speak before we go into exec. I concur, however, we're waiting to hear some counsel from our.
I understand, but if we can set a time limit and come back.
We are, Stan, we said, well, limit it to 10 to 15 minutes.
10 minutes.
But that has a lot to do with the folks around us, so. Do we have a vote? All in favor?
15 minutes, aye.
Aye.
No, 10 minutes, aye.
Five minutes, aye. Okay. Motion carries. Right? We'll wait. Just trying to hurry up so everybody can get to public comment. Where's Nina?
I don't know.
We have public who wants to comment.
Here she is.
Okay. Do we have a motion to come out of public, I mean, come out of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Clerk Perillo, you want to take over the agenda for a minute?
Yes.
We're going to, we're going to deal with the correspondence after public comment, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so now we are going to public comment.
Hi, good evening. Lisa Yeager, a resident here in Port Jefferson Village. I'm in 1 Jefferson Landing Circle. In 2022, I approached the village with a problem that we had been dealing with in Port Jefferson, all over Long Island. We're estimating there's about 750,000 cats in and on Long Island in Suffolk County alone. We have had cases of rabies now, which has been almost 18 years since we've had a case of rabies on Long Island, but we do have them again. Back in 2022, they, the village implemented a TNR program. By the way, I run 501(c)(3) non-for-profit called Yeager's Run Animal Rescue. I've been servicing Port Jefferson Village and the surrounding areas with their wildlife for all of this time. I donate my time, my money. I have a full rehab at my house. I work with the Sweetire Nature Center, I work with the Star Foundation in Middle Island, and I also work with the Evelyn Alexander Wildlife Rescue Center in Hampton Bays. So basically, we had, my rescue had spent about $20,000 over the past, I don't know, like, five years prior, TNRing cats, trapping, neutering, and releasing them back. Also, rabies vaccination, FERCP, distemper vaccination, making them safe, for them to live and safe for our public. I had approached the village and had asked for a $7,500 budget to do the TNR here, because it was costing us way too much money, and I was having a hard time raising it. They did give me a $3,000 budget, okay? During the course of that time, we had used up $2,065 of that budget, so approximately $2,100 of that budget. May 13, 2024, I had submitted all of the bills and everything, and I have copies of everything here, and I can actually leave that with you. This is not the first time Clerk Perillo has seen this. This is the third time I'm handing her these, just so you know. I still have not been reimbursed the $2,100. We have since cleaned up three different areas here in Port Jefferson. We still need the funds to continue the program, so I would like to find out why I have not been reimbursed the $2,100 I'm owed. I'd like to also know, like to find out what happened with the additional $900 that was budgeted for that program? And I, again, this is the second time I've gotten up, and I've asked the village if they would implement the program again to continue. I don't think it was as important two years ago as it is now, because cats are, feral cats are, when they become rabid, they will spread rabies, and it's very dangerous. It's more dangerous than raccoons getting them, getting rabies, because they're out and about, and they're in our village. So I would like to know why I haven't been reimbursed the $2,100 that was budgeted for me, and where the additional $900 is.
The village clerk, it's public comment sort of what the village clerk will do, not that she'll respond to you directly.
All right, we tried that once before.
And I also would like, if you're done speaking, I'd like to speak to you outside, because I have money for you.
Okay. All right. Also, so in my second, my second situation I wanted to bring up, I know that, I know that Kyle's been working with me on this, and, by the way, Kyle, thank you for, like, doing the right thing tonight. Everybody in this, in this room appreciates what you did tonight.
So Kyle has.
So Kyle has been working with this new public safety group and I think it's great. We have had some serious situations down on the intersection of Jefferson Landing Circle and Old Post Road and they did implement a, one of those speed things, so when you come around, it tells you how fast you're going. And just, just the other day, my daughter was going to make a right-hand turn into Jefferson Landing and somebody stopped short because one of the wonderful people that was putting the new sign up, I guess they take the other one down and they calculate how, how fast people were going. Somebody went around my daughter and another car, around Jefferson Landing into oncoming traffic and almost hit the vehicle that was changing the, it's a very dangerous intersection. So I understand that we're, we're clocking the speed there, but I would love to see a stop sign there. It's very dangerous. Just for the record, I picked up these two baby fawns. One of them died in my arms. The other one, we had to actually go up into the woods and get him because he was hit at that intersection. So, you know, listen, it's, my heart's with the animals, but to be very honest with you, this could be, these kids, they're not, they're not, they're on bicycles, they're on these scooters. They're coming out of Jefferson Landing, they're going across the street. There's cars coming down there and I can tell you, I come down there and if I'm not going home, I got to slow down because I'm doing 40 miles an hour. And I'll be honest with you. Here's my other question. So the village's speed limit is 25 miles an hour, correct? Why is it 30 where I live? Why is it 30 miles an hour down Old Post Road? The speed limit's different than it is in, so the people in the basic area of the village are more important than people on the outskirts of the village? I think if we're going to be a village, we're going to have a speed limit. I think it should be 25 miles an hour for everybody. And I think that's pretty much it. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight.
Thank you.
Next, I can just come up?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Gary Zammack. I live in Wilson John, Port Jeff. I'm here this evening to speak to the trustees about the systematic change to the decision-making formula used to determine the rates for the Port Jefferson Country Club. As we all know, Port Jefferson Country Club is one of the many reasons Port Jeff Village is a destination for life. I'm a member of the newly formed Board of Governors at the Port Jefferson Country Club. This committee was re-instituted in December of 2023. It is the only committee in the village that has a majority of non-resident members. And the majority does not have the village's best interest in mind, according to me. In our prior years, the CCMAC has been in charge of recommending to the Board of Trustees the new rates for the Port Jefferson Country Club. The CCMAC has set up a system to meet the Port Jefferson Country Club operating budget. In doing so, a base rate was decided upon. That base rate is the non-resident rate and the village rate is 60% of the base rate. An example would be if a non-resident or the base rate is $1,000, the village rate would be $600. Just a quick math example. This is the first year that the Board of Governors is setting rates for the Port Jefferson Country Club. Not to be redundant, but the Board of Governors has a majority of non-residents. At the meeting on 11/4, new rates were decided by the Board of Governors. These rates must be approved by the Village Board of Trustees, you all. Prior to the vote, the general manager of the Country Club and a member of the Village Finance Committee both recommended keeping the same system used by the CCMAC, a base rate and then the village rate at 60%. Both of these gentlemen, obviously, not obviously, both of these gentlemen did not get a say or a vote. The Board of Governors decided to change that existing system and institute a straight dollar raise that would be the same for village residents and non-residents. In doing so, the established proportion, non-resident rate and resident rate has been changed, adversely affecting village residents. I'm here this evening so that you hopefully can fix this mistake. One, the existing system should be put back in place where there's a base rate, non-resident rate, and then there's a village rate which would be 60% of the base rate. It should become policy for all future rates. Two, a constitution slash bylaws must be written for the newly formed Board of Governors that specifically states that the majority members of the Board of Governors are village residents. And I would also propose that the president of that board should also be a village resident. I did email the five of you. Three of you wrote back. I really appreciate the three of you who wrote back to me. And again, thank you for consideration. Hope you all have a good evening. Thank you.
I'm looking at the treasurer real quick. Can I ask him to update? No. Yeah, I know. Have an update for you offline, Gary, so.
Okay.
All right, next. No rates have been proposed yet, by the way.
Tracy Donnelly, To Stern Drive. First, I appreciate all the trustees. We're going to clap for you guys soon too, I'm pretty sure. Thank you for the support. You know, what's happening here, I think, this room is filled with people concerned about what's going on with the Code situation and I was one of the first people to stand up here and ask if the Code officers would be indemnified, insured and protected in the event that they needed to protect us and discharge their weapons. So here we are, a year and five months later, and the only answer I got was from someone outside saying that they were. And I remember Chief Owen quickly responding to me that folks were indemnified and that's what we're hearing again. I find it interesting that we said there is no constable title, but there's a resolution in our agenda to remove that, that title, right? And have a public hearing about that. I think what we're talking about here is misleading communications and the mayor's contradictory actions. So as I said, there's, there's a claim that there's no constable titles that exist, but yet they exist in the union contract. We've been provided with three different timelines. The trustees on this board were led to believe that the incident happened days prior to an emergency meeting. Then there was a quote in Newsday that it happened two weeks prior. And then we got a letter saying it happened September 27th. So those inconsistencies make it very difficult to discuss an issue as complex and complicated as needing to align Code policy, union contracts and the work that the Code officers do in conjunction with Suffolk County Police to keep us safe, to protect us. They're often the first on the scene for everything that happens. They're there to break up fights. Whether or not they should or shouldn't is, I think, a matter that requires a lot of discussion and research, not that needs to be done and misled. And I believe the board was misled to vote on something without being given the direct facts. That's first. You know, we get in here and then right away, we go into an executive session. This has happened several times and everyone's left to sit here on the school board. We come in an hour and a half before the meetings to have our executive session so that when the public's sitting there, they're not waiting for us. They come in and we do the work before the meeting. That's just a suggestion that might be helpful for everybody here, so you have time to discuss what's on the agenda and then the ability to do this. I felt it was important to make that clarification around my name being associated with saying, "I suggested that we stripped, that we stripped the Code officers of their guns." I asked the Attorney Moran, which I appreciate you responding and saying that that was never said, but other people heard it, so I don't know if it's true or it's not. And I don't tend to actually, you know, I'd rather just wait for the facts, so I'll sit back on that one. I think when you make changes like this, part of this is the process. Our Code officers are out there every day, whether you believe, they bring safety, I believe they do. They're the first ones that people see. I think they're a deterrent. Whether or not they can give out tickets is irrelevant. When they're sitting at a stop sign, people slow down because they don't know if they can or they can't. That's first and foremost. They're already in the village, so when I had an accident, they were the first people on the scene. So I think, I'm not opining on what the contract says or what the Code policy says. I'm opining on the fact that a process where the people that we rely on to protect us and keep us safe found out about the fact that they were stripped of their guns on social media. I run a large organization. I have 1,300 staff. I would never make a policy or implement something without meeting with my staff first, having a discussion and being collaborative. This, you ran on transparency and that you had ethics and that there was all these paths behind backdoor deals. I have yet to see you produce a single one of those accusations and that's all we're experiencing here right now, is backdoor deals, private conversations, misled comments and things that are not facts. And then people are led to make decisions and they're supposed to believe you. And the problem that's happening is even when you see statements being made, people are saying, "Well, they didn't ask." The board has to ask the mayor. So, I mean, my suggestion is everything that comes out of the mayor's mouth, your mouth, I would have to check and verify if I sat in the position any of you were sitting in and I think as the public, we need to do the same. I don't trust you. I don't believe what you say and I don't think you have the concern of us villagers or the people that live in this village first. I think you push your own agenda. You've done it before and you have a history of it. You've done it at Stony Brook. You've done it to people in this audience and you're doing it now. So I'm asking you to stop. You don't have as much time as you have here. Try to be collaborative. Try to actually allow people to help and be part of something. Just because people don't support you or didn't vote for you doesn't mean they don't care what happens in this village. So I suggest you rethink the way you do your business here because everybody sees it. I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Andrew Owen, 25, Greg Lane, former chief of Code for the Village of Port Jeff. I want to start off by saying thank you to the mayor, to the board, to the village, residents of the village and to the visitors for allowing me to be your chief for the last year and a half. I appreciate it. I hope that my work here has had some sort of positive effect on the village. That being said, I think I'm going to piggyback on what Tracy said about, about a timeline. The incident in question was September 27th with the firearm being left in the bathroom. I was off that day. I received a phone call from the village clerk saying that there was an incident going on and I needed to come into the village. I said, "Well, what's the story?" She told me that a firearm was left in the bathroom. It was secured and that we needed to determine who owned the firearm. That day, I had two gentlemen working that were armed. I proceeded to call the one gentleman. He had his on him. I called the second gentleman. He said he had just retrieved his firearm and re-holstered it. I called the clerk back. I said, "We found out who had the firearm, who left their firearm in the bathroom." The clerk said, "I have him in front of me. I'm speaking to him now." I said, "Do you need me to come down?" She said, "No." I said, "Okay," I said, "I'll conduct an investigation." She said, "Well, how can you conduct an investigation? You weren't even here." According to the village code, the chief of code is the one that's supposed to conduct all internal investigations. She stated that she would handle it. Enough said. So from then, approximately two weeks later, I was having a conversation with the, with the village clerk about a memorandum that had to be put out with regards to bathroom usage and Code enforcement officers. And that I had to put a memorandum out that stated that all armed Code enforcement officers could only use the bathroom in the Code office, or actually it says Constable office. I told her that that, I think was illegal and also went against the contract that the constables had with the village. I in turn reached out to the CSEA and they did what they had to do in regards. Sum and substance, I told her I wasn't going to put that memorandum out, not under my name anyway. I didn't agree with it. So we fast forward to October 23rd. At the meeting, Resolution Number 29-102324 was adopted by the Board of Trustees saying that all members of the Code Enforcement Bureau, whether armed or unarmed, could only use the bathroom in the Constable office. We're grownups, ladies and gentlemen. To, to signal out one demographic of your employees that can only use one bathroom, first of all, it's against the law. It's illegal. It goes against the contract that you had. And the scenario that I brought up to the clerk was we close the beaches and at the beaches, there's bathrooms. And I'm a constable, I'm a Code officer and I'm closing the bathroom up and I have to use the bathroom. And I said, "Can I use that bathroom?" She told me, "No." I have to drive across the village, come to Village Hall, take myself off of patrol, walk past two bathrooms downstairs, come up behind a locked door and go into that bathroom. That's asinine. It's ridiculous, I told her. And I posed her another question. There's two officers working. One's using the bathroom. The other one also has to use the bathroom. He's having an issue. What's he supposed to do? She told me he has to wait. Let's think about this. This isn't romper room. We're grown men and women. To have to tell somebody to wait to use the bathroom, ridiculous. So what it comes down to is, so that resolution was put into place on the 23rd. On the 24th, like I said, I had a conversation with the clerk. She asked me to put the policy out that all Code Enforcement Bureau officers, armed and unarmed, could only use the one bathroom. I told her I wasn't going to do it. I said, "If she wants to put something out with her name and the mayor's name on it, fine, go ahead, but I'm not going to put it out." So that evening, I happened to see that there's an emergency meeting called on October 25th with regard to public safety, okay? There's an emergency meeting with regard to public safety. You would think that the head, the chief of Code Enforcement Bureau, Public Safety, would be notified as to what was going on. So that evening, I texted and called both the mayor and the, and the clerk, both of which ignored my text and/or phone call. Okay, fine. The next day, I reached out to both of them again. Not a peep. No one texted me back. No one answered my phone call. No one spoke to me about it. So here comes the, the emergency meeting and I got a phone call at 4:30 in the afternoon from the clerk stating that I have to reach out to the officers that are coming in for the 6 o'clock shift and tell them to leave their firearms at home because they've been, I'm going to use the correct terminology, suspended. The firearm, carrying your firearms has been suspended. That led me an hour and a half to contact these people. Okay. I reached out to them. I contacted them and lo and behold, they didn't carry their firearms. It's my belief that this emergency meeting took place as direct retaliation for me not putting out this bathroom memorandum. If you put two and two together, you get four, okay? After several meetings with the clerk and the village attorney, contentious meetings I may add, I submitted my resignation on November 4th, giving the village my two-week notice. I said to the mayor, "I couldn't stick around in good faith enforcing policies that I didn't believe in." She stated she would hope I would stick around to help the transition. On November 8th, this is where it gets interesting, is I was served with papers by another village employee at my personal residence that I was put on paid administrative leave. Is it ethical to use another village employee to serve papers to another village employee? And also, is it ethical to give out someone's private address to another village employee? Let's think about that. So that's what concerns me. And finally, some food for thought. The mayor offered, offered the officer that left the firearm in the bathroom the position of Code Enforcement Supervisor to take my place. Now, listen to this. It's interesting considering that the officer that was irresponsible with their firearm was offered the position of the responsibility of overseeing the Code Enforcement Bureau. Just think about that for a minute. I guess nobody knows about that. Well, now you do. Shift coverage. The mayor was stated in an interview staying on News 12, saying that the resignation of seven of our members would not have an effect on shift coverage. I'm going to tell you, today, on the day shift, there was one solo Code member working and he has less than two months as a Code Enforcement Officer. That is a safety issue. And finally, not once was anyone in Code, not only myself, conferred with before this whole firearms business came about. And it would only make sense that you confer with the people that are here to protect you. What would be the implications if you guys didn't carry firearms? And nobody from Suffolk County, six precincts, was conferred with either. And nobody from Suffolk County, six precincts, was conferred with either. So, last but not least, Mayor, your transparency and communication has turned into smoke and mirrors. Thank you.
I am an active constable, investigator, code enforcement officer, whatever you want to call me. I wasn't going to do this originally for fear of retaliation, but at this point, I can't with a clear conscience let my colleagues go to work without knowing exactly what's going on and without the village knowing exactly what's going on. So, I wrote a whole essay on what's going on and all that, but the things that are very important are the things that, you know, again, we don't talk about. The words being thrown around, what were called, first responders, not first responders, qualified, not qualified. What people don't know, we've had three shootings in the last five years. We were the first ones to respond. We have the best police department in the country. We have the best fire department in the country, hands down, and this is not in any way a reflection on them. But we're two minutes from the incident. They're five, six, seven, 10, maybe closer. Three shootings. One, we were the ones administering first aid before anyone else got there. Two, we drove them to the hospital. And the third one, unfortunately, was the one in front of Chase Bank and it was a fatality. But we were also there to help with other things like secure the crime scene, protect the rest of the people in the neighborhood from the active shooters that weren't caught at the time. So, when we're there, we're not there just to write a ticket. We're there to protect the community. So, you can call us whatever you want. We are first responders. We're certified. We're certified CPR. I have personally administered Narcan. I have personally done CPR. I have personally pulled someone out of an overturned car. I think most of you remember the cars that have gone in the water over at Barnum? Who jumped in the water? The ticket writers? Yeah, you're right. It was the constables. It was us. We jumped in the water. We got them out of the car. But we're not first responders. One of the comments I read, which is actually funny, was that something to the effect of, you know, what do you need, a GED to have that job? Well, I thought that was good. That was on Facebook, not, you know, not trustee, but I think the image here that we are supposed to just write tickets, if that's what the village wants, that's what they'll get at the end of the day. However, the village is less safe because we're not armed. 100%. We have been there. I wrote a whole bunch of stories about some of the police officers that have come and asked us for help. Specifically, when we had a, about three months ago, when there was a call about a kid running around with a long gun. We got called on the radio, which we can't use now for some reason. And then the police officers that responded asked us to help Candace to find this, fortunately it was unfounded, which is great. But we're not first responders. So, again, wasn't going to do that, this because I am still working for now until you eliminate our department. But I can't with a clear conscience sit here and say, the village is safer because we're unarmed. It's as clear as day that we do more for the village than anybody, especially, I hate to say it, especially you want to admit, but we are first responders. We've administered first aid. We have been there. We support the police in many instances. I have one that actually tracked me around the village to thank me personally because of a situation. But again, you want us to just write tickets, parking tickets? Well, you know what? That's not going to happen. And I really worry about Thanksgiving Eve. We have 15 guys on last year. We wrote probably 12 field appearance tickets for drinking in public, fights, and someone mentioned fights. It's actually in the code that we're not supposed to get into fights. That makes sense. But tell the owner report side, when a fight breaks out, that we have to stand back and call the police and watch them fight. Because that's what you guys essentially want us to do. Now, you know, as a good citizen, would I jump into a fight anyway? Sure. But I'm certainly not going to watch people get beat up because I'm only supposed to be writing tickets. So, you know, the department has changed over the last two years, unfortunately. We were a very cohesive group. We did a lot. People recognized us. I, again, wrote many instances of where people, community have come up to me and said, thank you. Want to take pictures with us, take pictures of our cars, people from out of the country. But now, we're a joke out there. People know it. People know that, you know, the car clubs, they're just waiting for this toll to be resolved so they can come back down here with their loud mufflers. Because who's going to walk into a group of 30 people unarmed and start writing tickets for mufflers? So, again, I think that, you know, as Andy said, the transparency is not where it should be. And you have put us in danger. You've put the village in danger. You have put Suffolk in danger because our support for them even, we're there to back them up. But we're not first responders. So, should we not do CPR when someone calls? Should we not administer Narcan? Should we not go to the car accidents? And I don't know if it's true or not, but I did hear that you're going to remove the lights off our cars, too. If that's true, should we be doing traffic without lights on our cars? You already took constable off the back. So, you're clearly trying to eliminate the name constable, which is on our IDs, by the way, and in the village code. But you're going to take the lights down next? And I heard our uniforms are going to change. Tan pants, purple, something like that? I don't know. That's great. That's going to keep us safe. So, you know, you guys can decide whatever you want. You've already lost several good people who care about this village. You're going to lose a lot more. And unfortunately, it's not us that are going to suffer. So, I hope you reconsider this and do what's right by the village, do what's right by your employees. You've made us unsafe. You can throw around whatever word you want, but we are unsafe now. And I actually hope, maybe you should all do a ride along and write field appearance tickets without a gun, without feeling that you could defend yourself. That's all I have to say. But again, if this costs you my job, so be it. But at the end of the day, you need to hear the truth and not what's being spewed because that is the truth.
Thank you for your comments. I'm glad you felt comfortable enough to express yourself like that.
I don't, but I don't have a choice.
My name is David Brengartner, Levemoreki Trail, Port Jefferson. I came here outraged in regards to the removal, the decision of the removal of the firearms from the constables. After hearing just a mere 20 to 30 minutes of people speaking, my head is spinning in regards to what is taking place today. I am a New York City police officer, retired, did 20 years. I was a target every single day that I put a military uniform on, whether I had a gun on or not. You have stripped firearms from people that are walking around in a military-style uniform and they are in danger. They can walk upon on anything at any given time. That's what policing is. Being in the right position at the wrong time, that's what policing is. I have over 700 felony arrests, zero civilian complaints in the New York City Police Department for 20 years of service. Okay? I am outraged in regards to this. I am safe as a Port Jefferson resident because I carry seven days a week, 24 hours a day, sleeping next to a firearm in my residence at my house. I am safe. I ask you as village trustees, if you were under the impression that this took place, this executive decision took place, would you have changed your vote of a firearm? A firearm is left in a bathroom. It is a mistake. Is it a grave mistake? Yes, it is. Does it happen? It's happened in Suffolk Police Department's bathrooms. It's happened in New York City Police Department's bathrooms. It's happened in Riverheads. Have we stripped those officers of their firearms? No. Because they go out there and they perform a duty every single day that makes every single one of you people safer. Mr. Kyle makes you safer. You're a resident here. Mr. Lox, you're a resident here, makes you safer. I am not college educated. I am a high school graduate of Port Jefferson. Okay? And I was an officer for 20 years, equivalent of a GED on the New York City Police Department when I was hired. Okay? So, to make fun of a code officer or a constable based on their education, I was a police officer. Okay? With a high school education, not a college education, and equivalent to a GED. I could have got out of the police department at my time of service. My head spins in regards to the things that I've heard and I am honestly disgusted, honestly disgusted of things that I've had. I hope things change inside of our trustees. I pray for all of us. And constable, I understand that the word constable in the dictionary is a peace officer. But I ask you, how long have you served here as an attorney? Word constable is on our back of our vehicles. It's on our bathroom.
Not anymore.
It's on our bathroom. It's on their badges that they still carry today. That has not been stripped. They're constables. That's what we've used as the word. The dictionary, yes, it says peace officer. Do I wish that they had peace officer status? I do. I do. But that was given, that was given back by Port Jefferson's Incorporated Village long before we were here today. I just hope things change and I hope this is resolved in the positive way to make those officers safer today and safer for our residents. Thank you.
Tracy Donnelly, Two Stern Drive. I'm just reading a field report that was just sent to me. It's dated November 18th, 24. Mayor Shepero stopped Corporal Walsh doing a patrol of the tennis court parking lot to inform him of a village resident reporting an unidentified suspicious character walking in the area of Arlington Street. She sent Corporal Washington, went to the place of occurrence with negative findings and he was sequestered back. So, this is a field report of you sending a code officer to actually do police work. You didn't send him to write a ticket. You didn't send him to do anything. You saw something that from all accounts of what you're saying code officers do and constables do, we should have called Suffolk County Police if we saw an unidentified suspicious person. And I'll send this to Clerk Perillo. So, you sent an unarmed officer and you asked him to do police work yourself. And it's dated November 18th, 2024. Are you, can you not remember it?
Can I correct the record on that?
Yeah, here, I'll send it right now to clerk.
I don't need to see it. It was actually a text from a resident. It wasn't Arlington. It was the Highlands. And it was, hey, did you see, did you get that call from the resident in the Highlands? You're the supervisor on, right?
From your own village, so.
I'm just, you know. A resident texted me because the resident called code, left a message, and I ran into the code officer in the tennis court when I was walking back from an appointment in the village. And I asked the supervisor on if he had seen or heard the call because the resident left a message. And I said, I believe it was about this area in the village. And he said he would go take a look. That's the story.
Okay. Again, David Brengartner, Levemoreki Trail. If that incident report just took place, you as a mayor, whether or not you said that, you should have directed that code officer not to attend that because that is police work. He has no business whatsoever on a suspicious male, unarmed suspicious male going to that location. You should have said, whether you heard that conversation or not, you should have told, you need to call Suffolk PD on that. All right? And just getting back, because I forgot to mention the fact that I know that Suffolk Police Department came here today and in regards, gave their statistics of last month's based crime rates to this month. Last year, we were at 17. This year, we're at 22. That's not safer. Okay? Those are just crime rates. Okay? I don't have the year crime rates, the stats, because Suffolk PD does not have those. I will get those and I will be at the next meeting and I will bring those numbers to light also. So, from 17 of last year to 22 this year, is it not safer situation? If you times five, times 12, you're at 60 crimes more based on those numbers there. Is that safer to you, Mayor? That's a question.
I don't have information to respond.
Is 60 crimes, is 60 crimes last year safer than 60 more this year? If you had 60 more crimes this year, are you more safer or less safer than last year?
Generally?
Yes.
I don't have enough information to answer your question. I don't know the facts, the data.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more thing to ask. I'm sorry. Joe Karachi, again, investigator, constable, code officer, ticket writer, whatever you want to call me. Maybe it's for the attorney, maybe it's for you. To my knowledge, there has not been one incident involving a code officer, constable, using a firearm in the village since its inception. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we, as I recall, all of the issues that came about were about insurance and liability. And the real risk to the village about us carrying firearms? Well, again, to my knowledge, because every one of us who carries a firearm is fully qualified with the count, we take the same qualifications that, yes, same qualifications to carry a firearm. We are authorized to do so. The county gives us the authority to do it based on the qualifications we have. But again, I'm pretty sure that I've heard there has never been an instance where a code officer has ever discharged a weapon. I don't even think there's an instance where they've brandished it or actually pulled it out of their holster and had a situation. So, I think the fear mongering is really the biggest issue here because we've created this whole environment of, we're a risk because the gun was left out. And again, not a good thing, but nobody was at risk. It was dealt with, clearly not the right way. And now, we're going to go say that we're a risk? Again, find the statistics, look it up, not once. So, I think that it's actually not a liability. In fact, it's actually better for the village that we're armed. So, I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that because again, I don't think there has been one.
Bruce Miller, 109 Scraggy Hill Road, Port Jeff. So, in a time of extraordinary stress in Great Britain, the monarchy adapted a phrase, keep calm and carry on. And I would advise the trustees to keep calm and carry on. And I would suggest to the residents that you keep calm. I feel safe, frankly. We've been told we are safe. We know we are safe. We know this is a safe community. We had an unfortunate incident which caused some introspection and a policy was made. And I have supported the code people. I still support the code people and I've ridden with the code people. But I have never been in favor of the code people carrying guns. I was a trustee for eight years. My view of the code's responsibility is that they do act to protect us. We're getting hung up in terms, first responders, kind We're getting hung up in terms, first responders kind of a thing. They respond immediately and they've always responded well. So I'm not here criticizing the Code Department. I'm here to support the Code Department. When you have a very negative interaction hypothetically that the Code is dealing with, they are to report to the Suffolk County Police and bring them into this. This, we have a very good police department and they are very capable of handling these situations and they are an instant away by radio. I think we are perhaps safer under Mayor Shepro's leadership. Thank you. All right. So I will tell you all, because I've dealt with this for eight years.
You're supposed to address the crowd. You turn around.
Okay. You feel free to criticize me. Okay. I'll turn around and advise. Do I get a chance to talk or what? Thanks.
I'm saying it's disrespectful.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. So as I said, I've, I've never thought that Code should be armed. We've thrown terms around, liability. Well, basically, if something unfortunate happens with a firearm and that person is a Port Jefferson code enforcement person, that becomes a Port Jefferson problem. If something unfortunate happens with a firearm and it is the Suffolk County Police Officers involved, that becomes a problem for Suffolk County. I feel that Mayor Shepro has had a better relationship with the Suffolk County Police Department than her predecessor. And I lived through this for eight years. We were constantly trying to get more assistance for the village from the county and it never happened. It has happened since then. Therefore, we are safer. This happened to such an extent that I have personal connections with the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department's office. And I offered to use those connections to bring in additional help with the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department. Now, we do not need to do that at this time because we have sufficient help. And we're getting a lot distracted. A, we are safe. And B, a lot of terms being thrown around. I think everybody in this room respects the job that our Code people do. We're getting hung up in legal terms. Are they Code? Are they constables? We know who they are. We know what they do and we want them to continue to do it. I have never felt that it was a good idea to have them armed when they do that. Basically, we have been told that we are safe. I know we are safe. I walk this town any time of day or night. As I said, I have traveled all evening long with the Code Enforcement people. It can get kind of rowdy downtown in the bars and they do their part to help keep us safe and contain foolishness, let's put it that way. They also work with the Suffolk County Police, which is the primary law enforcement agency of the town. And I thank you for your time. As I said, I suggest to all, keep calm and carry on. We're getting, we're stirring a lot of stuff up here, creating a lot of hostility. We are safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Riley, 17 Leroy Lane. And Bruce, I beg to differ with you. Maybe you haven't been walking around Upper Port. I wish you could see through my eyes because there's a lot of unsafetiness in Upper Port. And when I had mentioned that on Saturday, I called the Suffolk County Police because of a disheveled person that was all like laying on the ground, all kind of in a bundle with a cigarette right on the edge of the six acres, held up like this. And that's when I called and I've called Code and then I left a message and then I called Suffolk County Police. So what was, Code called me right back. It was Officer Crawl. And in the conversation with her, she says, well, I don't know if he has, I said, can you approach him? And this gentleman, because he shouldn't be there, he could cause a fire during this whole time of, of the drought. And so she says, well, if he has a firearm, I, I wouldn't be able to approach him. And so I said, oh, well, I called Suffolk County Police. Now she was driving around and she said, oh, there's a Suffolk County Police up by the railroad, maybe I can get them. And I said, oh, would you please take the time? And she was very, very good at speaking with me. I was grateful for the time. And I found out that she did approach the gentleman and she took the risk, okay? And approached the gentleman, put out his cigarette, gave him some water. He was from Pox Christie. So again, the problem, I don't feel safe.
One more time, sorry. I don't, since I'm probably going to lose my job anyway, I may as well go with it again. Joseph Karachi, let's get her. I actually completely disagree with, I'm sorry, is it Bruce? I'm sorry, Bruce. I've worked under both administrations and I will say that it was actually a lot safer and there was a better relationship between us and Suffolk County Police Department under the previous administration. Now, with that being said, some of the things that have changed for us since the new administration, I'll give you an example. Arden and Main. I spend a lot of my time on Arden and Main. I find it to be very, very valuable to stop the speeding. I'll walk across the street. I'll slow people down. Having the car there is good omnipresence, keeping people from speeding, which is clearly a problem. I don't think anyone would disagree. But what has happened over the last two years is we've gotten directive because, two things. The mayor is still in the town, so make sure you're not on Arden and Main. And guys, do not spend more than five, 10 minutes on Arden and Main because you don't want them seeing you. So yeah, it is different. And I will say, I, we have a great working relationship with Suffolk County Police Department. Not, you know, not one bad situation. They've always been great. They've always supported us. We've supported them. But as someone who's worked in both administrations, I can tell you that the offices that I've dealt with, it was much better back then. And again, now, they don't even, we're not even wanted on Main Street. We're told, we were told specifically, you know, you're on Main Street too long. I've gotten a call from the supervisor, who's gotten the call from someone saying, why are you still on Main Street? To me, I'd rather sit on Main Street slowing down the speeders than writing a $40 ticket to someone who's parked 15 minutes longer than they should be. But that's not what they want. So because of this administration, we're told, don't stay on Arden and Main. Don't have two people together on Arden and Main. Don't walk up and down Main Street for too long. And we're told to, you know, kind of scatter. So I just don't understand where that's, you know, keeping us safer. And, you know, I would love to have more Suffolk County Police Officers come up here and talk, but I understand they probably can't. But I, I think that you'd get the same answer from them if you were to ask the many members who ride in 610 and 607 who cover this area. You know? So that's the last time.
If all the officers are done, I just want to speak a little about procedure and the lack of procedure being kept, being run the way it should be. I believe one of the beauties of living in a small village is being able to participate in its government. Yes, Robert Grimm, 18 Pine Hill Road, Port Jeff. So I believe that the benefits of living in a village is being able to participate in its government. It appears that our participation has been taken from us. Major decisions are being made with no input from residents. So I was, the whole thing with the emergency meeting just didn't sit right with me. So I decided to reach out to the New York Department of State Committee on Open Government in reference to the October 25th questionable emergency meeting. The deputy director and counsel of that committee responded saying that, in my opinion, a discussion relating to a resolution to ban village employees from carrying firearms in their official capacity does not fit within any permissible reasons to enter into executive session. This should have been discussed in an open session. It appears that using the emergency meeting was just a means of making a change to village Code with no resident input. The mayor said that the village was looking at this for over a year. Why was it never discussed in an open meeting? My second example is a recent violation today of the New York State Open Meeting laws in the late posting of this week's meeting agenda. It posted today around 11:00 AM. It should have been 6 o'clock last night at the latest. That is well past the 24 hour minimum. And people might say, what is that? Take the residents who are working all day. So now they come home, if they made it in time to get to the meeting or just get here, and this is the package you expect them to absorb before they come to meeting to listen and be able to give feedback? It's not right. And it gives the appearance that this was done so residents would not be able to see it. And because there's other memos and stuff in here to be discussed and letters that nobody would know about because they couldn't read this thing. And then when they got here, there wasn't even enough on the counter. Okay? My third example is taking it somewhere else, but I think it's important. My third example is the Bluff Restoration Project, which is dear to my heart. And on the village website, the most up to date information about the East Beach will be two years old in January. This is a multimillion dollar project and the residents deserve to be kept informed and they need to be allowed to have a say in what's happening with, where their money's being spent. This isn't a few thousand dollars. I have lost faith in the village government. I and other residents are now second guessing everything that comes out from the mayor's office. This is not the way we want our village to be run. And if you, if you look at it, a lot of these things might be nothing, but because of what we're getting and not getting input, we're reading into this automatically like, maybe that agenda didn't come to us because they're not going to let us speak tonight. And this, this is not a good feeling in the village. So, and I appreciate the trustees who have taken a stand here and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I reiterate, keep calm and carry on. We're talking about transparency. I was on the board for eight years and I was liaison to the Conservation Advisory Committee. The Conservation Advisory Committee over eight years, and I was on the Conservation Advisory Committee on and off for about 30 years, was never informed or never permitted to participate in any discussions about the bluff. This is a gigantic issue. The previous mayor admitted that she knew about the problem with the bluff seven years prior. And yet, we got an emergency, emergency notification that we had to do something about the bluff very quickly because we're going to lose, Stan will tell you, the tennis courts and possibly a significant part of the country club building. All of this happened very quickly. I spent eight years on that committee, you know, like the proverbial mushroom, I won't continue with the rest of the metaphor, and, and be notified about events during a meeting. So a little perspective, please understand that you have a lot more transparency than you have had in the past. Well, I was on the inside, but not on the inside. So I, I know of this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Sora, Two Stern Drive. So first off, I just want to say thank you so much to our Code Officers who are here tonight, who are here out of a lot of courage. And I really do appreciate that because they are really incredibly valuable to our village. Now, the issue of transparency has caught, come up and in talking about whether Code Officers should be able to carry firearms or not, I don't want to necessarily give a whole thing about my opinion on that. Although to be clear, my opinion is that stripping our men and women who serve here in this village and making people like me feel unsafe on a Friday or Saturday night out in the village with my friends or with my family, I believe that is completely wrong. So I really do appreciate you all for coming here tonight. What I want to bring up and what I want to discuss is transparency and the mischaracterization of facts and the misrepresentation of truth by Mayor Shepro. So about a year and five months ago, when we had the reorganization meeting of your administration, during the work session, Trustee Laux left the meeting after the work session before the public meeting where the public could speak. He was the country club liaison appointed in 2015 and from 2018 to 2019 fiscal year, the country club balance was a negative of $370,000. In the fiscal year of 2022, 2023, with Trustee Laux's incredible work for our country club, the treasurer's office estimated just over a million dollars in fund balance for our country club. Trustee Laux met with Mayor Shepro earlier the week of that reorganization meeting and was told verbally and in an email that he would retain that position. The day of that reorganization meeting, he was not only told that he would not retain that position, but that that position would no longer be available. There would be no country club liaison. The first thing you did to Trustee Laux, someone who has served this village, was mischaracterize facts and misrepresent the truth. A few months later in December, we began our paving project at Harborfront Park. We had a $90,000 grant and an award letter from Suffolk and Brookhaven that we could pave that park. We cannot use any of that. We are not entitled to any of those funds and you told us, the public, that that is what would happen, that those funds would be used for that. And we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars paving Harborfront Park and we cannot have any of those funds. You misrepresented the truth, not only to trustees, but to the public again. Now we are here. There's been multiple misrepresentations of truth through your administration, but this one is glaring. We are here tonight to defend our Code Officers who defend us, who serve us in this village. I just want to say how grateful I am because when my mom and I had a car accident, even though they're not characterized as first responders, they were the first responders. They were the people who were there, making sure that we were warm and had a blanket around us on a December morning. They made sure that we were safe. They made sure that other residents were safe. And if there was a violent incident that happened, they would be the first people to respond to. They put their safety on the line and they do that for us, the residents. I am really extraordinarily tired of having misrepresentations of truth from the mayor's office and from herself. It has been incredibly disappointing as a young resident to see this happen and to see this really blossom under this administration. It is really disappointing. That is what I have to say. I really believe that there can be change here. If we can do enough, if we can have enough truth, there can be change and there can be real positive changes made to this village that benefit us, the residents. But besides your opinion on whether Code Officers should carry firearms or not, because all opinions are validated here. We have had multiple people come up with different opinions and that is okay. What is not okay is when Mayor Shepro, you have directly misrepresented the truth, not only to your fellow trustees, not only to your employees, but to the residents. And that hurts. It's just really disappointing. I hope that we can see change. I still, I still believe in a lot of the trustees up here who have been fighting for us. Trustee Laux, I appreciate the work that you've done really for us over the past many years of service to this village and everything that you will continue to do in the future. I hope things can be better soon. As of right now, they are not. And I hope that the public can see. Again, I'd be willing to meet with anyone from this crowd to talk in depth about this issue because I don't want to take so much more time. But really, it is all about misrepresenting the truth. It is about mischaracterizing the facts for your agenda and for your gain. That's disappointing. Good night. Good night.
Anybody else want to take a shot?
Hi, I'm Gail Sternberg on Owosco Drive in Port Jeff. I just have one question. Are we insured for these guys to carry? I mean, everybody believes, yes, they would be more comfortable carrying guns, but if one did fire... Now, I know it never happened yet, but I have car insurance, and thank God I never had a fatal accident. You still have to be insured for the unexpected. Are we insured in the present state? Was the prior administration insured if something happened with a firearm? That's what I want to know. Thank you. Can you answer me?
It's public comment. We'll have answers to a lot of these, a lot of this rhetoric going forward, and when we are looking at the resolution to look at Chapter 19. That's the public hearing portion. Anyone else?
Orthorept 206 East Main Street. Ordinarily, I don't self-disclose in public, but I wanted to share something that I'm most proud of about my lineage. My maternal grandmother immigrated from Ireland in 1915, courageously coming to the United States by herself after the Lusitania had been torpedoed by the Germans. She went through Ellis Island and worked in the Upper East Side as an au pair for a wealthy family who introduced her to George Walcott Challett of razor blade fame, but instead she married a humble police officer from Garden City, New York. I'm named after him. My grandfather, whom I never met, was a police officer for an incorporated village. So when I hear these stories, I feel them in a very personal, deep way. When I say I'm proud of my grandparents, among other things, they did tremendous charity, including taking battered women into their home and giving them refuge. I understand when you are in law enforcement and you clock out at the end of the day, the job doesn't stop for you. You keep caring. And I know whether we want to call them constables or whether we want to call them code enforcement, there have been innumerable heroic acts they have put forward over the years, including administering Narcan, pulling people out of the water, assisting after a shooting. And yes, I personally was in Chase Bank several years ago when it was robbed, and to the best of my recollection, code came within 30 to 60 seconds, and Suffolk County Police was closer to a half hour. So I will not disparage any member of code enforcement at all. I appreciate their good works. But at the same time, I've listened to, with carefully, to everything everyone said, and I'm not doubting the veracity of a word spoken or the character of any person who's come forward. But in actuality, if you want to form an educated opinion, you have to hear both sides of the story. And we haven't heard what our trustees and Mayor Shepro have to say yet, or at least I haven't. So I, at this point, still cannot form an educated opinion. The one thing I want to remind people of is about 18 months ago, our mayor and board of trustees had a major misstep. It was, I believe, March 20th, and there was an ill-advised vote to change the way elections occur in Port Jefferson Village. And what Mayor Garant at the time did, to her credit, was she essentially hit the reset button. And it was actually an opportunity that was good for our village, and I believe overall it was a very healthy event. As a consequence of that, I served on an election task force with trustee Yurginski as well as trustee Hill. And I think we discussed the matter over months and came to a really good conclusion in a report we submitted. I'm just wondering, putting it out there, if we need to hit the reset button once again. We've done it before in the village, and perhaps instead of just having a public meeting, maybe we should institute a task force again and try to really garner as many facts as possible so we don't... I don't believe we've made a snap decision, but dare I say, I don't want to see us, I'm sorry to say this tongue-in-cheek, to shoot from the hip. Again, I just want all information garnered. I want all thoughts and people respected, but I want everything out on the table so that someone like myself, who's learning all of this just tonight, can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought he might be coming up. But is there anyone else? Anyone else who'd like to speak publicly? Okay. Do we have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Move the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
While I am very, very incredibly tempted to read some of the correspondence that I've received over the course of the past several weeks since this, well, October 25th, to be exact, since the entire board voted unanimously to suspend code from carrying firearms while on duty, and every single employee in the village of Port Jefferson from carrying firearms while on duty and at work in the village, I think it's best to hold off because we are, hopefully, if this board agrees to a public hearing resolution coming into the agenda, we have a full opportunity to examine everything at that time. There is a lot of information that we have that might contradict some of the statements that we've heard tonight, but again, I think it's better to hear it holistically during an official public hearing where we will be discussing whether or not a code is in conflict with another in our, in our village code. So, we'll move on with the agenda, which will be, we'd like to read a correspondence that we received from county executive Ed Romaine that was received last week. So, Clerk Perler, would you please read this correspondence into the public record, please?
Mayor, if I may interject before we do that, can we release Labor Council?
Do you want to leave?
Could we really, village?
You're free to go. Thank you.
This is from county executive Edward P. Romaine to Mr. Richard B. Cosson, P.E., Regional Director of the New York State Department of Transportation, regarding the Lawrence Aviation Industries. Dear Director Cosson, it has come to my attention that New York State DOT is delaying the conveyance of property at the Lawrence Aviation Industries' LAI site in Port Jefferson to the MTA. I seek your assistance with this important matter. The Suffolk County Land Bank, SCLB, is currently in contract with MTA to purchase this site for future railroad use. It is an ideal location for a rail yard that is contemplated as part of the Port Jefferson branch modernization project included in the MTA 20-year needs assessment and mentioned as a possible planning effort in the currently proposed 2025 to 2029 capital plan. A tremendous investment has occurred at the LAI site to bring it back into productive use since it was placed on the National Priorities List as a federal superfund site in the year 2000. EPA has invested more than $35 million for the environmental site investigation and remediation effort, and NYSDEC recently completed demolition of structures on the site. Suffolk County is grateful for the outstanding work performed by the NYSDEC and for all of the federal and state funds that have been and continue to be invested in this 126-acre site. The $10 MTA purchase price for the rail-use parcel is substantially below market rate. In fact, Suffolk County has appropriated 2.1 million of ARPA funds as part of the settlement agreement, with nine plaintiffs seeking to recover value owed to them from the sale of LAI. SCLB would like to close on the intended MTA site as soon as possible. MTA is seeking to obtain an easement over the Greenway at the site from NYSDOT for rail yard operations. MTA has committed to reroute the Greenway when yard, excuse me, when yard construction occurs in a future year. Additionally, Suffolk County has committed in 2023 to funding a bridge over the rail yard if a future Route 25A bypass is constructed utilizing the Greenway right-of-way in this area, mitigating a strong concern previously expressed by NYSDOT. Despite that, NYSDOT will not commit to the easement, and MTA will not close on the LAI property without the easement. Earlier this year, the county filed freedom of information requests for additional information regarding NYSDOT's contentions about FHWA repayment conditions and future plans to convert the Greenway into a vehicular roadway to no avail. This project is too important to our region to delay it any longer at best, or at worst, let it fail due to inter-agency disagreements. I would appreciate a response from your office on this matter by November 22nd, 2024. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I'm confident that we will find an optimal path forward that preserves future options while maximizing the use of all financial resources available to Suffolk County and NYS.
Thank you. That will be entered into the official record of the minutes. Okay, now it's time to move on to our agenda items?
Yes, Mayor. With Resolution Number 1, 112024, resolution approving the attachments of the October 23rd, 2024, October 25th, 2024, and November 6th, 2024, meetings of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, sounds like we have a motion and...
We have a motion. Trustee Laux, would you like to second?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
I have a discussion before we vote?
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, we were, we were appropriately in executive session on the October, before we, before we approved the minutes of those meetings, on the October 25th session, we were appropriately in exec for a contract issue and for litigation. That allows us to go into executive session, no?
Yes, trustee, it does.
Okay. In that case, I'm...
So it is referenced, how, how is it referenced in the minutes there?
Motion to enter into executive session to discuss a contract issue litigation at 2:35 p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 2, 112024, resolution approving the event application submitted by Barbara Ransom on behalf of the Greater Port Jefferson Chamber of Commerce for the use of Village of Port Jefferson personnel for traffic control related to the requested closure of both lanes of Main Street and East Broadway for one half hour and for the use of village personnel for two hours to ensure pedestrian safety for the annual Santa Parade beginning at 3:00 p.m. on December 1st, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 3, 112024, resolution approving the event application submitted by James Luciano on behalf of the Business Improvement District to use portions of village-owned properties from 12:00 noon through, excuse me, through 5:00 p.m. on January 18th, 2025, and January 19th, 2025, with setup beginning at 8:00 a.m. on January 18th, 2025 for the annual ICE Festival, with rain dates of January 25th, 2025, and January 26th, 2025. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 4, 112024, resolution approving the event application submitted by Joel Posner on behalf of Hope House Ministries for the use of a portion of Harborfront Park and the Wayfair Room in the Village Center from 10:00 a.m. through 1:00 p.m. on March 15th, 2025 for a polar plunge fundraiser. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second it. I have a question.
You have, you have discussions, Stan?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right.
I'm concerned about the, there's a resolution later on the agenda about rates. Will they be charged a rate to use this facility?
Yes, according to the Village Center manager, they will be charged a rate, yes.
Okay.
Trustee Laux, I think the question, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding of your question is, which rate are they going to be charged? Because if we approve this, and I think later on it's effective immediately, so when is, when is immediately starting, I guess?
This is approving the event application?
Yes.
Not the actual agreement, right?
Right.
So, what did, do you recall what this event, were they charged a fee last year?
I believe that they were, yes.
And it was, I don't even know what, I couldn't recall what it, what it is, but, don't know, Stan, so... Do you want to table this? Because we don't have a rate that is known at this time?
Well, I think we're going to approve the rates or disapprove the rates later on the agenda.
Yes.
This is for the event application, so I don't know that it is connected to the rates at, at this time. Have you discussed with Mr. Posner the rates?
I believe that the Village Center manager has.
Is there an agreement in place? We can't answer it, so...
I cannot answer that. I know that there's been discussion, but again, this is for the event permit application, and then the other parts would be ancillary.
Well, we have until March 15th, so maybe we table this?
Well, you don't want to, you want to table approving his application?
No, I think there should be a rate attached to it.
We haven't, we haven't in the past addressed it that way, where we would connect the rate to the event permit application in the resolution. We've considered them always two separate parts and have allowed the Village Center manager to work on the rate portion. Many times with the event application, they come to us early so that advertising can begin and, and the process can begin for getting participants.
You think Mr. Posner would be disappointed if, if we voted on this next month?
I can't speak to the disappointment. I can only speak to the fact that it would delay, it would delay the advertising by a month.
Is it, is it safe to say that, that this resolution just allows Hope House Ministries to make the application rather than enter into contract? Isn't the contract something, a separate document? Isn't the contract something, a separate document?
The application has been made. There is a separate agreement with the Village Center.
Okay, so we can approve this, but there's still no contract in place, is that right?
To my knowledge, there is not one with the Village Center, that's correct.
Okay, and that would still have to be inked?
Correct.
So that gives us time to vote on the rates and then for the contract to be finalized, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we... do we have a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution Number 5, 112024, resolution approving the event application submitted by Cynthia Court on behalf of Mather Hospital for the use of Village personnel to perform traffic control and to effectuate the partial closure of Belt Hair Road for the annual Mather Hospital Northwell Health Walk, which begins at 10 o'clock AM on May 18th, 2025. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 6, 112024, resolution approving the attached easement between the Village of Port Jefferson and Suffolk County regarding the application of Endura Blend or comparable treatment to up to 18 Village-owned locations per the awarded Downtown Revitalization Program grant. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 7, 112024, resolution accepting with regret the resignation of Melissa Gianola from the Public Safety Advisory Council, effective October 28th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Did we get a vote from everybody? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 8, 112024, resolution approving the attached resolution as recommended by the New York Conference of Mayors in support of the continuation of an increase in state aid for local governments in the 2025-2026 state budget. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 9, 112024, resolution approving the hiring of Michael Sheridan as a full-time laborer in the Department of Public Works at an annual salary of $33,280, effective November 21st, 2024. The standard 26-week civil service probationary period applies to this hiring, as do all the provisions set forth in the collective bargaining agreement currently in force between the Village of Port Jefferson and CSCEA Local 1000. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 10, 112024, resolution amending Resolution Number 16, 92524, to update the hourly wage rate for Anthony Lazzo from $18.31 per hour to $19.31 per hour, effective October 2nd, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 11, 112024, resolution accepting the retirement of Charles Gennaro, effective October 30th, 2024, and the retirement of Brian Frank, effective November 23rd, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 12, 112024, resolution accepting the resignation of William Sander, effective October 26th, 2024, Richard Rahib, effective October 30th, 2024, Michael Sideki, effective November 7th, 2024, Philip Cofaro, effective November 8th, 2024, and Andrew Owen, effective November 19th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we just clarify what their positions are?
Code enforcement.
Enforcement officers.
According to the Civil Service list, approved civil service titles are code enforcement.
Resolution Number 13, 112024, resolution approving the attached open-end equity lease rate quote from Enterprise Fleet Management in the amount of $1,106.45 each month for 60 months for the lease of a 2024 Ford F-250 for use by the Department of Public Works, primarily as a plow truck, and authorizing Mayor Shepro to sign the lease rate quote on behalf of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second motion. Question?
Discussion?
Yes. Does the truck come with a plow?
It is a plow truck.
I know it's a plow truck, but they don't always come with a plow.
The plow package is part of the quote from Enterprise.
Good.
The plow itself they have at DPW.
Good price.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 14, 112024, resolution ratifying an extension of the contract to December 31st, 2024, between the Village of Port Jefferson and Wellsback Electric Corp of Long Island, with all requirements and terms agreed to in the original contract dated July 1st, 2021. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 15, 112024, resolution accepting the attached proposal submitted by Long Island Firewood and Mulch for the plowing and removal of snow in specified parking lots and on Village streets as required, per the bid opening on November 12th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 16, 112024, resolution approving change order number 5, in the amount of $30,000 for the continuation of architectural and engineering services to assist the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals with the review of specified planning and zoning application submittals for projects within the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 17, 112024, resolution ratifying an extension through June 30th, 2025, of the contract between the Village of Port Jefferson and Social Butterfly for the provision of website content and social media management, with all terms and conditions per the executed proposal dated July 9th, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have just some questions on this.
Could we just, for public meeting, what's the price of the contract per month? $3,000, right?
It's $1,000.
Great. Did you see the attachment, Kyle?
Yes.
Okay, what...
So it's $3,000?
You can see what it is. You have the document there?
Yes, it is.
Well, you know, if we have the treasure here, I might as well confirm. And the posts are two per week? Is that it?
Actually goes beyond that most weeks, most every... in fact, every week, yeah.
And then is this person creating the content or posts are just like hitting... oh, sorry. What do I want, green or red? Is this person creating the content or are they... like, are they creating the graphics or is that in-house done and then this person's posting them?
Both are happening. There's content and graphics that are being created by our graphic artist and also the Social Butterfly team is creating graphics and content.
Okay. Just because I, you know, coming off my last job, we were working with someone and they were our social media manager, and we were paying them full-time $5,500 a month. And they were drafting all that content and putting it up and traveling along with the principal to, you know, shoot film, grab pictures. Now that we're at this juncture of deciding to extend it or not, I just think the... I don't know if the fee is matching the content that we're putting out there. And do we have any analytics from the last extent or this contract previously? Like, what was our engagement improvement, anything like that?
We could schedule a presentation by the team?
Okay.
At the next work session?
And...
Or the following one, whatever, however long it takes them to pull it together.
And then, when... sorry, this I don't know or I can't remember. When does the contract expire?
What does it say in the resolution? Through?
No, 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 right now. Like, if this resolution doesn't...
I believe that it expired in June, and that's why we're ratifying. The inconsistency occurred because the contract was open-ended, but it was discovered that our resolution was not. So we wanted to have a housekeeping item to close that gap.
Can we change this just to go another month and then look at those analytics?
That's not what the resolution says.
So we cannot amend the resolution?
Well, they're working for free?
No, I'm saying we could extend, you know, if we're paying this person under no contract right now, we could authorize a contract for one more month or until the next board meeting to look at the analytics and see what we've gotten for the last however long this person's been helping us out.
It's a team of people, but what...
Or, sorry, you know, butterfly to analytics, or butterfly, social butterfly.
I'm looking to the process table.
From a legal perspective, if you're entering to that contract, which the contract itself was open-ended, but the resolution said it expired, I think, on June 30th or July 1st, somewhere in those two days, and they continue to provide that service, I would, from a legal perspective, I would suggest that that morphs to a month-to-month engagement. But I think trustee Hill, if I'm hearing you correctly, you would like to accomplish both goals by extending the contract that was to expire on June 30th, maybe to December 31st and give a month to work on it or January 15th, so that, under a contract that has an actual termination, while you can gather the analytics. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, thank you.
And then the board could do what they want with that, but that's...
Would we change the resolution?
We could seek an amendment to the resolution, changing it to a date the board agrees on as the new termination date, subject to extension if the board doesn't complete its analytical findings by then. That would be legally sufficient for me.
Why is everybody looking at me?
All right.
Kyle, why don't you make a... why don't we make a motion to amend the resolution for a date, and if it has a second in support, then that's what it'll be.
Okay. I'm gonna look at our work calendar, if you're... bear with me.
When's the next work session? Sylvia, please?
December 4th.
Fourth.
Three weeks with a holiday.
Could I suggest the first of the year?
Yeah. We could do January 8th as our work session.
Want to extend the contract to January 30th, 31st, right? There's 31 days?
31 days. Yeah, why don't we do the end of January?
Okay, that sounds fair.
Okay.
You good on that?
Yeah.
We need a motion and a second.
So, motion to amend the Resolution 17 to January 31st instead of June 30th, 2025.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Trustee Lox will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 18, 112024, resolution approving option number one on the attached proposal submitted by Land Design Associates for a conceptual alignment study of Willis Avenue from Sheep pasture road to Alice Street for sidewalk construction at a lump sum cost of $4,700 and an additional $215 per hour of principal time for meetings and presentations as required, and authorizing Mayor Shepro to sign the proposal on behalf of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 19, 112024, resolution approving the attached extension of the 2024 highway agreement between the Village of Port Jefferson and the Town of Brookhaven regarding the provision by the Town of Brookhaven of the available sand-salt mixture, and authorizing Mayor Shepro to sign the extension on behalf of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 20, 112024, resolution ratifying the hiring of Jack Maloney as a tennis instructor in the Recreation Department from November 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025, at an hourly wage rate of $19 per hour. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 21, 112024, resolution ratifying the hiring of Shane White and Josh Shields as flag football instructors in the Recreation Department from September 23rd, 2024 through November 11th, 2024, at an hourly wage rate of $25 per hour. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to ask a question, but I don't know if we can answer it. The difference in the per hour is considerable between the previous and the present resolution. I don't think we can answer it here, but I just want to note it. That's a considerable difference.
I mean, from Resolution 20 and above it?
Yes.
I would be comfortable in stating that that's a great conversation to have with the Recreation Department.
Mm-hmm.
This is a recommendation coming from them, so I suspect it has something to do with experience. But I'm sure that the hiring manager can respond to that for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 22, 112024, resolution approving the attached proposed room rental rates for the Village Center, effective immediately. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Question on this?
Discussion.
Do you want to add those not-for-profit?
Did you sneak this on our... who snuck this on our desks? Who's the culprit? Did you?
I put it on your desk.
Okay, thank you. So we're... do you have a copy of this?
I'm sorry.
It's not an official part of the record, but I look to trustee Ugrinsky for feedback on this.
I believe that the amended version number three that was sent to the clerk a little late when that was caught includes all of these.
Does it include the school district?
Yes. Yes. In fact, it was initially included twice, so the last correction was making it one instance of the school district.
Our... I understand there's a... there was a meeting today with the school district about setting up an MOU?
Yes, so we had a meeting today with the school district to discuss putting in place an MOU that identifies the facility usage that the village is using of the schools and the school is using of the villages, and ensuring that that is an equitable sharing of facilities and cost overhead, and just putting an MOU in place that defines that. Why is that important? Because that way we have something from which to procedurally make decisions in coming budget years, and it also represents a closer relationship that we're building now with the school district. So just wanted to thank them for their participation, and we've got a plan. I believe we will be finalizing the lists in two weeks from today, and at that point we will start drafting the MOU, and obviously our council and their council will have final pen on those. And so, yep, that's the update.
That basically exempt the school district from being considered part of this not-for-profit or campus organizations group?
It is... so it's being contemplated that the agreement would be a basis for going forward, and each of the organizations or, you know, the municipality and the school district would have a set amount of reciprocal usage, and above and beyond that, we would each be expected to And above and beyond that, we would each be expected to cover the fees going forward. So there will be, essentially, you can think of it as a bank. I hesitate to go any further with that because we've only floated that conceptually, and we're still working out the details.
Okay, so it doesn't, it does no harm to leave number seven on this list? Or is, if it's on the list that you provided to the clerk?
If, there is no harm in leaving it on the list as, as the clerk has it in the, the last version that I provided. Because, you know, they, they are essentially a resident organization, and anything above the MOU that gets put in place, they would be getting preferential rates to, you know, as part of that.
Okay. Okay, I look forward to seeing more information on the MOU. Yeah?
It's a work in process.
Okay, because my understanding was that it was going to kind of be a neutral cost to, to each. But we'll see what the MOU reveals.
I think we just need to quantify it and itemize, you know, the expected usage.
Okay.
The purpose is to make sure that it's fair.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I would just like to add that the school district and the village have been very cooperative, back and forth for years. We get good use out of their facilities, and they get good use out of ours.
Yep, agreed. Okay.
Is, is this officially part of the attachment then, now, or no?
I think the Trustee Ugrinsky provided the official attachment to the clerk.
Right, as a result of the Rec Committee having, having provided their input as well to what that list should be. And it also reflects, you know, consistency with what it has been in the past.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not disagreeing with anything. I'm just asking if it's officially part of the attachment that the resolution references. We just need to clean up, like, it says Historical Society and would have to say Port Jefferson Historical Society. I know we all mean that, but...
This is just a, I think Stan just put this on our, no.
Then it's not relevant.
I think he was trying to be comprehensive in the, in the process.
This came from Renee and the committee.
Those organizations are all listed on the attachment in our agenda, so they are the same.
So that is the official attachment. Okay, so should we vote? Can, are all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Resolution number 23, 112024. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of a request for proposals for the purchase of all chemicals and fertilizers utilized at the Village of Port Jefferson Country Club as recommended by Superintendent Pat Sullivan. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 24, 112024. Resolution appointing alternate Budget and Finance Committee member Renee Tidwell as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee to fill the unexpired portion of the term of Xena Ugrinsky. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 25, 112024. Resolution confirming the following term expiration dates for Budget and Finance Committee members. Irene Rios Knopf, June 2027. William Gata, June 2027. Carl Jensen, June 2026. Eunice Marado, June 2026. Renee Tidwell, June 2025. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
I, I thought we decided to have all terms the same in the village, three-year terms?
Well...
CCMAC is three years, the council's three years.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, Stan. So, we were instructed, and the instruction was given to the, to the Budget and Finance Committee that there needed to be two members with three-year terms, two members with two-year terms, and one member with one-year term. So, there was some discussion, and, and they self-selected.
It was inaugural, so when you're just starting off, you have to have the staggered terms.
Yeah, they're staggered, they're not one-year.
And it's just...
It's just, that's how it's going to start.
It's just, it's starting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then it's...
And I don't think that's what you said.
Thank you for that clarification.
And we did the same thing with the, the Safety Advisory Council, too.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 26, 112024. Resolution scheduling a public hearing for 6 o'clock PM on December 18th, 2024 at Village Hall, 121 West Broadway, Port Jefferson, New York, 11777, regarding a proposed local law abolishing Chapter 19, constables of the Code of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Attorney Moran, could you please just go through this a little bit to describe why and what, what this entails?
Mayor, as part of the investigation into the ability of our code enforcement unit to carry firearms, a deep delve found that in 1979, a, a code amendment, a code was put in entitled, it's Chapter 19, entitled "Constables." It would appear from the records that there was an immediate lawsuit filed by the County of Suffolk against the Village of Port Jeff as well as the Village of Patchog, which I'm trying to get my hands on, but it's a 1980 litigation. But I believe the sum and substance was the, the lack of statutory authority to add a constable code without constables being dedicated to the village by the New York State Legislature through the penal law, which is where it vests. Subsequently to that, there was also Senate notes. I believe that the mayor at the time reached out to Senator Laval to attempt to have the New York State Legislature ratify that constable code. I can't find any legislative hearings from 197, I went through all of 1979, all of 1980, and I don't see any official act of the state legislature, which I believe prompted the 1980 code amendment to the village code when it bolstered the code enforcement unit. And I think that's led to a bunch of confusion through the years, and obviously it led to that same confusion this evening about what the code enforcement usually actually is. And since we have zero statutory authority at the time, I, I believe that it was the intent of the board at that time to have the Code Enforcement Section supersede Chapter 19. It just was never removed. It comes about the same time Patchog did the same thing, but followed through with the removing of their constables from their code as part of the same lawsuit, I believe. That being said, the removal of Chapter 19 gives some clarity to the code. It also, there's no statutory authority for the village at that time to enact that code, which I think was evident by the lawsuit and the petition to the New York State Senate to, or the state legislature to ratify the calling of constables in the village constables, because that's dedicated through the penal law. And that is the reason for the removal of that code at this time.
Okay. All in favor?
Good question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, let me, let me see if I understood that in English. All of that essentially was describing the fact that, that we put constables in the code, and yet we had no New York State standing to do so?
I believe that was the crux of the, of the lawsuit in 1980.
Okay. Thank you.
You are, you are correct, and I believe Oldfield was also involved in that. So they went the other route, they created a police department.
I would agree with you.
Oldfield has a police department?
They do.
Yeah, as does, for example, Amityville, but, you know, it's, it's also an overhead of... $10 million.
I'm going to look into that because, last I heard, well, there was a lawsuit against Oldfield and Belter.
Right.
They, because they were issuing moving violations in the village, and externally a little bit, too, as I'm told. So Oldfield had to repay all those, those fines that they received in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for issuing those. And the only, you correct me if I'm wrong, there was a time in the 60s where Suffolk County offered to the towns and the villages, municipalities in the county that if they wanted to establish their own...
You could opt into the policing district.
Yes.
You know, so Town of Riverhead has a police department. The Town of Brookhaven at the time had a police department, but they opted in. Other municipalities, and whether it be townships or villages, went the police route and developed their own police department, opted out of the Suffolk County Police. At the time, I believe Stan is correct, that Oldfield was one of those. I don't know if they still exist. I don't know. But I do know about Patchog and Bellport, because that was in the research that I've done.
Okay, so, all that said, do we, we have, all in favor?
One question. What was the reasoning for the selection of the 18th?
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
So...
It's a normal, it's our normal timing for such, for such a public hearing.
Okay, but is there a reason it couldn't be done in January? I just think, so one, someone from the Safety Advisory Council emailed me asking and said, you know, it's right before the holidays, because their way it could be not that. And I said I'd ask, so here I am, but I do think she has a point. Like, we just do it in January at least? And is, there's, I also just want to, I guess, understand the urgency because it's in the code, but it's not in the civil service contract. But we've been that way for quite a while. And I understand we're trying to do our best to reconcile everything. But does it make a substantive difference?
That's a policy decision, Kyle, that's for your colleagues to decide, not me.
I do have one observation. I've, I've done a, a lot of union negotiations at this point for some other career reasons. And I've found that it takes pretty much, like, six months to get from beginning to end of a, a contract renegotiation. So I'd be concerned that we'd start butting up against, I mean, the contract is, when?
The end of May.
Yeah, so, so we, I think, I think we probably want to get started on this.
And does this...
And this simplifies those negotiations somewhat?
Does this impact, the impact negotiations that we're in right now?
There are zero constables in the bargaining unit, so no.
So...
The only people in the bargaining unit are code enforcement officers, which are governed by a different chapter of the code.
Okay, so then would it impact the CSCA contract?
That's not a matter for public forum, because that's, that's a legal position we would take.
I see.
If you want to bring this down to executive session to vet that, that's, again, up to you guys.
We let our labor council go.
Fair enough.
So can we decide next time, then?
I don't, I, I, I see no reason why to postpone it.
So there's a motion and a second?
Doesn't even, we don't even have, it's not a thing. It's not literally a thing, it's just been lingering in the code for 40 years.
Right, so what's the difference, then? If we do it in four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks?
Potentially, in response, you know, considering what Trustee, Trustee Ugrinsky brought up, so... I'm, I'm just saying, my policy position is to, to not change the date on this, so... I'm, I'm but one voice on, on a board of five.
If it helps, you could set the public hearing, you could do other things at that public hearing. You can keep it open for a period of time for written comment after the public hearing. You could do that for 30 days post, you could adjourn the public hearing.
All those things.
If you feel at that time, if, so if that gives anyone else a level of comfort as far as starting the process, it doesn't...
Happens all the time.
It doesn't mean you have to complete the process on the 18th, but just, you have other options than tabling it if the board, it does not want to table it tonight. You could also table it that night if you so choose.
It's a, it's a meeting that we're having, so...
You can't not have it without properly notifying it, setting the public hearing.
Right.
But if you do set the public hearing, nothing's stopping you from adjourning that public hearing if you choose to go forward on the 18th. Or again, on the 18th, if people are, if there's enough people who say they can't make it, you can keep it open for 30 days for written objections that the board can consider before closing the ultimate hearing and making a determination on the, whether or not to repeal the section of the law.
Okay.
So I, I think there's interest on the Public Safety Advisory Council to make comments or recommendations, too. And I just, since it was brought up, the, the date, I just worry the timeline's not conducive to that.
But they would have the extra 30 days.
Right, we could do...
To respond.
Right, an extra 30 days, but...
That addresses the holiday issue for someone who...
It does, but 30 days between December 18th and January 18th is usually not everyone's most free time.
I think we're going to be...
I said 30 days?
Right.
You could say January 30th, 31st, February 8th. It's yours to play with.
Or we just do it in January, right, when people are going to be back?
It's a you decision, I'm giving you the legal options.
Okay, I gotcha. Then, then my preference would be to do this a little bit later. I don't think we need to keep rushing on this subject.
Procedurally, Mayor, there's a motion, and I believe there's a second?
There is.
And I'll have the clerk call for a roll call vote, since there seems to be some dissension?
Okay. Trustee Laux?
I think we had partial public hearing here this evening, so I would stay with the original date you have on the resolution.
So that's an aye?
That's an aye, that's a yes? Thank you. Trustee Giuliano?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Ugrinsky?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Hill?
No.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 27, 112024. Resolution scheduling a public hearing for 6 o'clock PM on December 18th, 2024 at Village Hall, 121 West Broadway, Port Jefferson, New York, 11777, to obtain citizens' views and comments relative to the submission of an application to Empire State Development for financial assistance under the Restore New York Communities Initiative, round nine. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 28, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to create the following new capital fund line items. Revenue line item H4902001, federal aid flood study FEMA DR44800031. Expense line item H8090200, .200.1 FEMA DR44800031, flood reduction study. Revenue line item H4960.001, federal aid disaster assistance FEMA DR4615. And expense line item H8090.200.2 FEMA DR4615, Old Homestead Recharge Basin. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay.
I, I, I just want to point out, you know, there are a number of resolutions that are related to new expense lines, et cetera. And this is, once again, the continuation of the work that the Treasurer's Office is doing to try to fix what is wrong with our financial reporting system and bring it in line with New York State government requirements. So, I apologize that we've had, you know, a parade of these for the last couple of months. months, but these guys are just trying to get to a point where we can put a budget in place that is properly recorded, that we can use for variance analysis on a monthly basis, and will put the village in a position to better manage its finances and to always know exactly where we stand on everything. So with that, I...
Thank you, Treasurer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 29, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to create a new general fund line item to be known as line item A1490401, public works contractual, clerk of the works. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 30, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget transfer number 15 to close out the capital fiscal 2024 paving project account by reducing appropriations for line item H5110205, highway capital paving project by $68,063.13, and increasing appropriations for line item H99509, inter-fund transfer by $68,063.13, and requesting that budget transfer number 15 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 31, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget transfer number 16, appropriating contingency funds to fund a new clerk of the works contractual expense by reducing appropriations for line item A19904, contingency expense by $20,000, and increasing appropriations for line item A1490401, public works contractual clerk of the works, by $20,000, and requesting that budget transfer number 16 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 32, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget transfer number 17, appropriating contingency funds to fully fund the village grant administrator contract obligations by reducing appropriations for line item A19904, contingency expense by $6,245, and increasing appropriations for line item A80904, environmental expenses by $6,245, and requesting that budget transfer number 17 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 33, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget transfer number 18 to correct an over-budget payroll expense line item and fund expense through end of year, reducing appropriations for line item CR99509, inter-fund transfer by $40,000, and increasing appropriations for line item CR7989131, overtime grounds crew by $40,000, and requesting that budget transfer number 18 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 34, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget transfer number 19 to correct an over-budget social events expense line item, reducing appropriations for line item CR99509, inter-fund transfer by $32,000, and increasing appropriations for line item CR7992405, PJCC social events, by $32,000, and requesting that budget transfer number 19 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution number 35, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number 60, establishing the budget and funding sources for the FEMA DR44800031 initiatives for flood reduction studies capital project by raising anticipated revenue for line item H4902001, federal aid flood study FEMA DR44800031, by $285,843.60, and for line item H5031, inter-fund transfer by $30,000, $30,000, excuse me, $88.80, and increasing appropriations for line item H8090200.1 FEMA DR44800031, flood reduction study by $315,932.40, and requesting that budget amendment number 60 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 36, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number 61, raising anticipated revenues for line item A5031, inter-fund transfer by $30,088.80, and increasing appropriations for line item A9950.9, inter-fund transfer by $30,088.80, and requesting that budget amendment number 61 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 37, 112024. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number 62, correcting budget amendment number 11, and properly establishing the correct budget for the FEMA DR4615, Old Homestead Recharge Basin Capital Project, by decreasing anticipated revenues for line item H3089, other general government aid, by $1,138,989.88, and decreasing appropriations for line item H8997.6, recharge basin, by $1,138,989.88, and increasing anticipated revenues for line item H4960.001, federal aid disaster assistance FEMA DR4615, by $1,023,376.45, and line item H5710, serial bond proceeds, by $113,708.49, and increasing appropriations for line item H8090.200.2 FEMA DR4615, Old Homestead Recharge Basin, by $1,137,084.94, and requesting that budget amendment number 62 be included in the meeting minutes of the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is that all you got on that one?
Yeah. Could you repeat that?
I'll just be a moment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 38, 112024. Resolution approving the check register and warrants dated November 15th, 2024, as presented by Treasurer Gaffka and as approved by Claims Auditor Goodwin. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 39, 112024. Resolution approving the attached event permit application submitted by Alan Varela on behalf of the Greater Port Jefferson Arts Council for the use of village-owned properties beginning at 11:00 AM on December 7th, 2024, and ending at 6:00 PM on December 8th, 2024 for the annual Dickens Festival. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 40, 112024. Resolution approving the attached proposal submitted by GEI Consultants in the amount of $6,500 for the preparation of site plans depicting the cliff stabilizer pilot project for submittal to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution number 41, 112024. Resolution accepting the retirement of Todd C. Stumpf, effective November 30th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Todd's fire marshal in the village under the building, under the Department of Public Works, serving the community very well, and we're accepting his retirement. But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 42, 112024. Resolution to close the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Trustees at 9:06 PM. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Meeting's closed, right?
Yeah, and we finished what we went downstairs to do, so.